Hi there. How are you doing today?
Hello. Hi.
Hi. How are you, Srirata?
Tanishk, are you in Davis?
Hello.
Yeah, I actually live in Sacramento, but yes, I go to UC Davis.
Yeah, I'm in Placerville right now. I don't know if you know what that is.
Oh, okay.
Down the street.
Yeah.
I know Pleasantville. What are you doing there, Tamechi?
Placerville. It's my wife's grandma's house.
Oh, sorry. I guess I misheard what you said originally. I guess I don't know then.
Are you just here for a little bit or just for a vacation or something or?
Actually, a little over a month.
Okay.
We have family here.
So you're in the same time zone as me?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, I know Davis pretty well. Spent some time.
Okay. Yeah, I've been there. Well, yeah, I mean, my dad works in Davis as well. And of course, I go to been going to school at Davis and so, yeah.
So you commute?
Yeah, yeah. But I don't, I mostly work from home anyway, now that I'm focused on my research and given my research, it's all deep learning stuff. I can, I can do most of that from home. So I mostly work from home, but yeah.
Anybody got any APL news or anything else interesting happening?
Well, I was able to get a simple CSV file loaded and calculate and graph a moving average. So that was exciting.
That is exciting. I'm going to share my screen so I can show people. Oh, there's quite a lot here, actually. Where was that? Was that in Study Group 3?
That was in Tabular Data. That was a cool assignment thing that was very helpful about developing though.
What was this one?
At the bottom.
The assignment.
This assignment, yeah. I was able to kind of assign things to to the display, the special character, and then that let me print out different parts of the formula in order to
Oh.
Print out intermediate values.
In the middle.
That's right. And so 3 will get printed whenever it runs, but 6 will get assigned to Z.
Okay, that's neat.
That was pretty handy.
So quad doesn't have to be the far left thing. I mean, of course, it doesn't when you think about it, but I hadn't thought about it. So it's basically like a print statement. You can chuck it anywhere you like.
Yeah, which, which is really nice if you're trying to debug what you're doing. But Tabular Data was where the post was.
And I love that you're using the Quarto thing to publish it too. So, okay, so you've got an end of day quote data CSV file. So I noticed dialogue has, okay, so you said dialogue has a CSV thing built in. So do their built in functions tend to start with quad? Is that like how they spell them?
I think for a lot of the IO ones, I think, I don't really know for sure, but I know they've got like a CSV. I think they've got an XML and a JSON as well. Unfortunately, they don't have anything for like JPEGs or NDs or images, but they've, they've got a few, starting with quad.
Got it.
The way that you exit out of a dialogue here probably is using quad off as well. Like capital letters off.
As an AOF or?
Off, like.
Oh, off. OFF. Got it. And I guess this is like indexing the first five by three.
That's right, yeah.
Okay. Looks like you need to make this a markdown cell.
Oh.
Then you're doing some masking with booleans. Anyway, I don't understand all this stuff yet, but I guess we'll get there.
But I can walk through it. There's, there's some stuff you could like, or we can.
Yeah, no, I think I'd rather walk through it.
Symbols.
Yeah, I'd rather walk through it once we know all the glyphs.
Cool.
But look at that. You've got a plot. So that's great. And right square bracket seems to be another thing that's used for kind of like, I don't know, I think they're maybe not APL functions, but their dialogue commands or something, these right square bracket things.
Yeah, I'm not really clear all the conventions for what all those you know, mean and, and when to look for something in right square bracket versus there's some that are right parentheses and others that are plot. I'm not really sure what the difference between them all is.
Yeah. And is this, um, is this basically indexing into the, indexing the third column and all the rows?
Yes.
That means, okay, so that would be the same as colon, comma, three in PyTorch or NumPy.
Yeah.
And I guess this is just printing out the fact that it didn't return anything, which it could just be a a null array. Well, that's awesome.
So yeah, I'm hoping to build up more complexity over time in this and eventually I'd like to get a random forest going, but that seemed like a
Of course.
Not a good first step, so.
No, I mean, I know trees are something which like people say APL is really well suited to, but it doesn't feel well suited to, and you have to kind of learn the tree techniques for APL, which is something I would be fascinated to learn about as well. So yeah, one day. I wanted to have a quick diversion, if you guys don't mind, into something I just thought is of great value. Which is, I've mentioned Anki before. Do any of you guys use Anki or SuperMemo or any other repetitive space learning things? Well, that case, yeah. Sorry.
For learning vocabulary, right?
For remembering literally anything. Yeah. So, all right, I guess, let me explain. Cause like this is not exactly APL, but it's also like the most important single thing I know of. The learning things, so including APL. So so there was this guy called Eppinghaus, who developed this idea or discovered really this idea called the forgetting curve. And yeah, as it says here, it's from the 1880s. And basically what he did was he set up this really boring experiment where he had to try to remember a list of random sets of letters. Like look at them and then remember them the next day. And then he tracked over time, like each day, how many he remembered. So this is like the percent that he remembered and this would be like the day. And yeah, it like followed this kind of shape, right? Where actually it's trying to redraw that. This kind of shape. So like he discovered he forgot a lot of them really quickly. But some of them stuck around. And I mean, it shouldn't, it doesn't accentuate, of course, it goes to zero. Should show it going to zero. This is actually already interesting in itself because like a lot of people, particularly adults, I find feel disheartened and frustrated when they forget things and they think it shows that they have a bad memory. But that's not true. Actually, all humans rapidly forget new things that we learn. And so then what he tried doing was saying, well, what would happen if I, if he re-studies his random sets of letters one day later. And to re-study them, he basically, he gave himself a quiz to try to remember them. Right? And then if he didn't know the answer, he would check it. And so of course, immediately after that is, he was back to 100, well, you know, 100% issue or whatever his kind of base recall level is. And of course, after that, he started forgetting it. But interestingly, he didn't forget it as quickly. And then if a couple of days later, he gave himself a quiz again and then followed to see how long he remembered things for. It was flatter still. And if he did it again, a week or two later, it really hardly started, you know, found that it was hardly forgetting things at all. And so this is the key to remembering things basically forever. And there's a absolutely amazing website that nobody knows about called SuperMemo. And so for SuperMemo is software. But it's also this there's heaps of research. Basically, it's by a guy who's dedicated his whole life to using this technique to remember as many things as possible and to basically organize his whole life. And got all these rules of knowledge formulation. So the guy's name is Peter Wasdjak, and he's absolutely amazing. So he actually rediscovered this stuff from Eppinghaus independently, but then has greatly developed it over the last few decades. So there's this piece of software called Anki, which you can just say, okay, I want to learn, I want to remember something. So you give yourself a quiz question, right? So, for example, if you want to remember what monadic plus is on a complex number, you can like you know, type in some something like that. And obviously I should use a proper negative, but I'm not using an APL keyboard here. And then you put in the correct answer here or whatever. And so then you'd say add and it creates a question. And so what then happens is next time you open Anki and you say, and you say study, and it will start showing you your questions. And if you get it right, you can say it was, you know, basically either hit one, two, three or four to say, I got it wrong, or I got it right, but it was hard. I got it right. It was okay. I got it right. It was easy. And you can see here, if I say I got it right and it was easy, it's going to be about 10 minutes before it shows it to me again. That's because this is new, right? And then the next time I do it, if I get it right again, it'll give, it'll be a day. And then if I get it right again, it'll be like four days. If I get it right again, it'll be like two weeks. But once you get it right, like five or six times in a row, it'll be a month or two before you see it again. Because it's, because the thing about the forgetting curve is that the better you know something, the less often you have to revise it. So this deck is actually my daughter's and her friend, so Claire and Gabe's deck. I've just got a little bit of it here. And so you can browse it. You can see like, you know, we've got things like fractions and we've got things like the successor function. And we've got things like bind and out of product, because they're doing both math and APL at the same time. I guess a bit like us, but they haven't done lots of things before. So yeah, so I've got something here saying, oh, what happens if you do divide, jot, divide, call that F and you call F of that. And that's where I learned that basically you actually get back the same thing, because that means reciprocal or reciprocal. So I try to come up with questions that force them to like both remember the technique, but also you know, utilize some thinking. So yeah, so Gabe and Claire, if they remember, or if their parents manage to convince them, they try to do their Anki every day. And at first it was like a bit of a struggle to get them to do it. But now that like, we've been doing it for a month or two, probably more like two. There are things they learned a couple of months ago now, and that gets popping up on Anki and they press good and they can see that they won't see it again for like three months. And they're like, oh, this is awesome, you know? So it's gradually getting easier and easier. Anyway, so I just wanted to mention this because given we're all learning something new, this is a good way to remember you know, the alphabet of glyphs. And so I actually used this for Chinese 10 years ago or something. Yeah, and the reason it's impossible to forget something is if you say I got this wrong, it resets back the forgetting curve back to showing you again tomorrow and then three days and then five days or whatever, you know? So so as long as you do Anki regularly, it's impossible to forget the things that are there. It does mean that's important to only put in things there that you really do want to remember forever. Because you know, otherwise you're going to be spending all this time quizzing yourself and stuff that you actually don't care about. And you can always go back and delete things, but you know. Hey, don't forget to tell me things vocally rather than putting in the chat. Okay. So in the chat, Tanishk mentions that Redec has this nice thing called AI quizzes, which is really cool. And Mr. Deck on the call, how did you, if he is, how did you get this spaced repetition going? Is there a Python module for this or something?
I implemented it in Ruby on, I think it might be on the SuperMemo website.
Ah, you use the algorithm they have, yeah.
But the algorithm is there, yeah.
They've got lots of algorithms, right? Like SuperMemo algorithm version, whatever, SM17.
So there is, yes, there is, I think, some commercial product from what I remember. And they use some version of the algorithm there that is not published, but the earlier version had it published and I made some tiny modifications to simplify it.
I see. So he put it in his masterpieces. Yes, I can.
Okay, okay. So can you click on the first link that I sent on the chat?
Absolutely.
That is the best thing I have yet found on the topic of spaced repetition.
Great. Thank you. And hello, by the way, Risho, is it?
Yeah, yeah, it's Risho. Hi.
Nice to see you. Thanks for joining. Where are you joining us from?
From India. It's 5:30 in the morning here.
All right. Whereabouts in India are you?
Kolkata. Australia, Calcutta, yeah.
And I know Koreans in India as well.
Mm hmm.
And India's all one time zone, is that right?
Yes, yes. So it's somewhat impractical because the time, it is almost like midday in some parts. In some parts, it's barely daylight.
Yeah. Yeah, Australia is like, God, so many time zones.
This is the first time I am actually adjusting to Australian time zone, because before I adjusted to American and European.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we do that too. So like a lot of the stuff we do is in the US. So we have an early start and an early end to our day for that reason. All right. Thanks for the tip.
Do you miss things about the US?
Have you seen, there's like some work by Michael Nielsen, I think, like there's a, I think like a quantum computing book, but it was like all with space repetition.
Yeah, it's called Quantum Country, yeah.
Yeah.
Quantum dot country, yeah.
And yeah, I think he has a lot of discussion about, about space repetition and things like that as well. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, he came to it pretty late, but he
So the nice thing about Michael is Put on the address bar, one term dot country, that will look in this like just one term dot country, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Michael came to Space Repetition pretty recently, but he tends to get into things deeply when he gets into things, which is great. So yeah, him and Andy. So Andy used to be at Khan Academy.
Jeremy, have you been using this for APL? The Anki stuff?
Um, only, yes, indirectly, because I help my daughter with her cards sometimes. So therefore I end up doing it as well, which seems to be enough, because I haven't forgotten any glyphs yet. If I do find I start forgetting some glyphs, I will, to be my own.
I just want to point out, like, when I was working with Jeremy in the beginning, I used to complain that, hey, like, I can't remember stuff. Like Jeremy would also tell me sometimes, hey, you don't remember stuff. And then I would also say, hey, I feel like I don't remember anything. Maybe I'm just dumb. And he actually sent me some, some books. By, there was one by Barbara Oakley, for example, who also does the Coursera course. Like, I think it's the most popular Coursera course, learning how to learn. But it's, it's really interesting. And then he sent me another one by, like their guides, like professional memory.
I think that one you've been working with anything?
Yeah.
So Ed Cook was the world memory champion. And he actually created a startup called Memrise, which actually adds an additional thing, which is if you want to really remember things, well, you need a mnemonic for them, something to make it click in your head, you know, and preferably connections to other things, which actually for APL is easy, because most of the APL glyphs have their own mnemonic already, you know, they're, they're, they're drawn that way for a reason. But he actually particularly did this for Chinese to make sure that each of the 汉字 characters had some kind of mnemonic picture and stuff. And then, yeah, so Ed Cook also was the topic of a book. Moonwalking with Einstein, which is a really nice book. And it's one of those books that might help you change your understanding of yourself, because Josh is a guy, he was, I think, a journalist at the time, who thought of himself as somebody who had a bad memory. And he teamed up with Ed Cook to learn memory techniques. And yeah, so the whole book's kind of all about his journey. And interestingly, Josh actually went on to create something you might have come across. Which is Atlas Obscura. If you've seen that, it's a very cool very cool website full of interesting things. Cool. Thanks for letting me have a bit of a diversion.
So I had one question about, maybe a little bit more about the history and terminology of APL. For example, like I was, you know, I think yesterday you, we had gone over the zilde symbol.
Yeah.
But like, it technically looks like a theta symbol, right?
Uh, not quite. It's got a squiggle. It's a squiggly theta. Yeah.
So like, I guess, but I'm just generally wondering, where did these names come from? Like, it's kind of completely like, unlike what it should be called, like if you're looking at the Greek letters or whatever. So I'm kind of confused from that.
Well, okay. So I mean, this is not the Greek letter. So it's not wrong. The ones that are Greek letters are correct. So alpha is called alpha, iota is called iota, and omega is called omega. There, there is a thought that even those shouldn't be there, because like, they give preferential treatment to people of kind of European backgrounds who might recognize Greek letters. You know, but generally, so they were all created by Ken Iverson and his wife. And I think like his wife, like Drew, though, or something. And they're designed to be they're designed to be mnemonic, right? So for example, equals is the equals we recognize. And it means that 1, 2, 3 equals 2, 2, 3 will do a element wise equality, return a boolean. And like this one here is like extremely equal to
Showing your screen, by the way.
I'm not showing my screen, sorry. I always forget. Share screen. Uh, share screen, share screen. Okay, so 1, 2, 3 equals 2, 2, 3 gives 0, 0, 1, because it's element wise equals. And yeah, so I was just showing you on the zilda here that it's actually not a tilde. And so this one here, I kind of think of as like extremely equal to, because it checks whether two things are exactly the same items and exactly the same shape. I believe, something like that. Yes, it checks whether as you can see. So exactly. So that example, one. Oh, hold on. I should change. I got the wrong symbol here. So is it? There we go. Okay. So these are equal. And all right, one equals is extremely equal to is false, because they're different lengths. Or else is normal equals two is like broadcasted element wise. So there's these kind of like mnemonics, you know, and then obviously this is the like not version of that. And then some of them are kind of like borrowed from other areas. A lot of them are just drawings of things. This is the thing on the left hand side of a of a function. This is on the right hand side of a function. This is the biggest thing and the littlest thing. So yeah, they made them up, basically. And then somebody, I think in the chat, was him says Zelda is a portmanteau of zero tilde, which is exactly what it is. It's a zero with a tilde through it.
So was they, I guess, when these were created, because like these are all Unicode characters, right? So
They are now.
When they, they are now. Okay. So before they were not really part of Unicode and
So one of the things that really helped a lot was there are these things called golf ball typewriters. I don't know if you've ever seen them, but they're just, they're like normal typewriters. But instead of like lots of little different things that bang, there's a single thing that spins around and goes up and down to bang. And there was a APL one of those that was created. And apparently that helped a lot, because then people could like easily type set things. But until that time, my understanding is that Ken and his wife, I can't quite remember her name, Jeanette or something. Yeah, they basically would like draw them and then stick them in the right place and, you know, type set in that rather old fashioned way. So yeah, it must have been a lot of work. But I think like, most math was probably done that way anyway. So yeah, they ended up becoming part of Unicode. But of course, you know, fonts, most fonts don't have all Unicode characters in. And so if you're wondering why it is that you can look at like a webpage or something with APL characters, even if you don't have an APL font installed, your computer, operating system behind the scenes tries to find any font that contains a character that's, that's needed and will generally show it to you using that font if it, if it can. And it only falls back to the kind of like question mark or box if it can't find it at all. There's a really, actually a really great font. It's kind of like my favorite coding font in some ways anyway, which is Josephka. And Josephka Extended contains all of APL in quite a nice way and pretty much everything else. And it's a really nice font. So if you're ever wondering what font to use for your terminal, picking this one is not a bad choice. For your terminal, picking this one is not a bad choice. I don't know how they created so many. Characters and variants. Quite amazing. Uh, okay.
How did you learn about that font? Like, how did that?
Uh, no, uh, you know. Um. I tend to learn about everything mainly from Twitter and then some things from like Hacker News. And some things from like following links from one of those places and finding things. Okay, uh, so. All right, so we've got a kernel running. Um, I don't think there's probably anything to. Pull. No, there is. That might have just been GH pages. Have all or anybody, do you know if there's a way to like? Ignore a branch, like, I never need GH pages locally, right? This is. And that's going to update a lot more. They only really want to pull master. I don't know if that's possible. All right. I thought we could do like, um, some Boolean stuff today. If that sounds all right for everybody. Um. So these are all pretty straightforward, I think, unless some of the monetic ones are weird. Looks like equals doesn't have a monetic version. Dialogue language elements. Oh, if anybody's interested, oh, okay, I've got a couple of ideas for coding projects, if anybody's interested. The first is, um. This here. When rendered. Is, you know, an APL character in backticks. I think ideally, we'd want it to automatically hyperlink. To. The dialogue documentation. Wouldn't that be cool? So. If we went to. Here. Here. Um, yeah, it'd be nice if these were all. Automatic hyperlinks to the documentation. So if anybody's interested in trying that, um, the way you would implement it is, um. You would, we're using, um, well, I think Isaac's about to change this to use MB process. And in NB process, which is going to become NB dev two in a couple of weeks. There's basically a list of like. Processes, which are like all the things we do to change cells. And you can see each one's normally just two or three lines of code. That's one piece. And then another piece is. Dock links, which is the thing that does this in Python. So in Python, I've got something, I guess it'd be better to look at the notebook, actually. Dock links. So you've probably noticed that in NB dev websites, we automatically hyperlink. Anything that's in backticks. So here's an example. So in the source, this just said backtick numpy dot array, and it's automatically been hyperlink. And the way that's done is we use linkify. Uh, so that splits the lines up, it goes through each line, checks whether or not we're in a fenced area or not. And then, once we find the right lines, we create. Links in them. Um, which is done using. This class. So yeah, there might be somewhere to do that in APL. So that'd be, that's one idea for a project. Another idea for a project is, um. Anki is really. Useful for me as a teacher, um, but I have to use this kind of hacky approach to use it as a teacher. So I've created a deck for Gabe and Claire called Superschool, and they both also have decks called Superschool. And each time I do a lesson with them, I add some cards to the deck. And then I go file, export. And I then make this a collection package, sorry, a deck package containing. Just that deck, and I export it to a file. And then I send them that, that file, they click on it, it opens, and it imports that. Into their decks. So it means that I can create. Cards for my students, in this case, it's Claire and Gabe, and they can import them. Um, but we each, you know, we each have our own independent decks, so it means they can add stuff to their deck that I don't have in mine, or study other topics or whatever. So this project idea is. Make this all much simpler, like, so Anki does actually have an online version. Anki web. Um. So there must be, so there's an API for syncing with it. Um, and, um, there's quite a few versions of Anki that are open source, so I guess it's all documented in API. Yeah, it'd be nice if there was some way, maybe through some online interface to add cards, and it would automatically like send them off to. Each person or something. Um. Yeah, some easier way for teachers to. Send cards off to their, off to their students. Um. And there's lots of stuff you could add to that, right? You could then like, add some way for then teachers to actually check how the students are going, make sure that they're actually not behind. Because what happens is if you don't study your cards, then this learning number will go up and up and up. Um, and then the other thing I have to do is after each time I export, I then have to go and browse. And delete all the cards that are there, so that the next time I export, I'm only exporting the new cards. So there's definitely room to create some kind of cool. System for. A more, you know, collaborative learning approach with spaced repetition. Which I think could leverage Anki. And Anki's written in Python, by the way. Anyway, that was a little aside. Um. Okay. So equals. And. My guess was that this. Where's equals? Yeah, is that it? Yeah. Gets confusing with the underline. Okay, so there's no diet, there's no monetic equals. I might just make this into a little template that I can copy and paste. Okay. It'll save you some time. Equals, and it's called equal sign. Um, monetic doesn't exist. Okay, diatic equals. Means equal to. All right, so what equals one? Oops. One equals one, two. One equals one, one. Any other interesting examples? Oh, yeah, strings. So, um, probably useful to think about why this works. So this is, remember, is a special case. It's a, it's a character. You know, it's a single character, where else, and there's more than one, it becomes a. Array of characters. So this is a single character, so it'll be broadcast over all these characters. And so it'll end up being the same as banana equals, and then. Oopsie daisy. It'll be the same as that.
Every second, banana is in a, that's something I didn't know before.
There you go.
Hey, banana consists.
Yeah.
I think if you, if you do, um, this equals A, and you have, um, a list of words, so like banana and, and apple. I think it will still go. Um. I think it will still go element-wise through each one, um, rather than looking at that higher level, I think.
Nope.
Uh, sorry, I meant the banana and apple on the left-hand side.
Okay.
Equals A.
Okay.
I think.
Oh, okay, so you're not saying, you're not saying this, you're saying this. Okay, and so I can tell you why that is. That's because a scaler can broadcast over. A matrix, and I think that that creates. I think that's like internally. A matrix.
And so then if you do equals apple, it will not find. Apple, I think.
Hang on, let me just, uh. Get my thing going here. Oh, that's interesting. That's three things. Okay, I'm a bit confused about strings. Sorry, what were you saying we could do?
Yeah, so I think now if you do like the same banana, apple, candy is equal to apple. I think it will not, it'll also do element-wise. And so, uh, it won't find any.
Right.
I, I had a lot of problems with this on the moving.
Yeah, yeah, so, um. NumPy. Broadcasts vectors over matrices, where else APL doesn't. Um, so at some point we'll come across something called the H operator, which will work around that problem. All right, cool. Um. And actually, to make this more consistent, I should. Run everything above. I can't quite see, because this is in the way. So, run all above.
You know, we could almost generate a, uh. We could almost generate an Anki deck automatically from this notebook that you're writing, Jeremy.
Oh, wow, that would be another interesting exercise. Love it. Yeah, that would be sweet. All right, I will try to continue to write it in a way that would be, that would, yeah, that would make sense to do that. I certainly think so far it does. Uh, okay, that's interesting. So not equals. Does have a monetic version. Not equals. And I think it's going to be helpful during the Boelians quite early, because you use Boelians a lot. And when we say Boolean, we mean, um. Arrays containing zeros and ones. Oh, wait, how did I? Get to there, not equals. I don't see them mon, wait, monetic not equal is not defined. Monetic not new equal is unique mask. Whoa, okay, that's crazy. Um. Oh, look, this is seventeen point one. What if I type eighteen point two up here? Ha, okay, oh, that's a bit tricky. Um. Let's see if they also now have a. Uh. Monetic equals. Things are changing. That's cool. They don't, okay. Monetic not equal means unique mask.
This is one of the things that happens when you search for documentation using Google, it often returns the older version.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so.
It looks like you can use, you can use close, what, right square bracket help, followed by a glyph, and then executing that opens the dock.
Okay, great. And. Uh, does that even work here? Um, sorry, tell me what to type again.
Help?
Nope, with a capital H, what does it matter?
Uh, I don't think it matters. And then the glyph.
Oh, love it. Okay, that's. That's a winning trick. Let's put that. Up here.
All lowercase works as well.
And I think with this string, the broadcasting only happens for only one character, I think. So can you say that at this point?
Well, I want to learn more about exactly what's going on, um, and we actually haven't talked about broadcasting at all yet.
Yes, so like in NumPy, they do whenever it is compatible, the shape doesn't matter.
That's right. NumPy does what we would call trailing axis. So NumPy, as long as the. The last axes are match, it will broadcast over the, the leading axes. J, J and BQN do the opposite. So they will, as long as the leading axes match, it will broadcast over the trailing axes. Um, APL does neither. APL only broadcasts scalars or does element-wise of matching shapes. So otherwise you have to use this thing we will come across called, called, um, H. So I think we'll leave broadcasting maybe until we get to H.
I think I used in clothes for that, so now I'm, now I'm questioning if I did it the right way.
Oh, well, I, I'm not, yeah, I, because I haven't gotten to it yet, I, I don't actually know the fully correct answer to this, so I'm sure you know more about it than I do. Uh, here we go.
Well, I don't know the H operator, so it's, uh. I think I'm just.
Um. So there's this. Yeah. They call it H on that. Um, yeah, J has a more.
Oh, I've used that. Yes, I need Anki.
Um, quite right. Um. And then there's also. Um, rank, I don't remember which one is rank, but. Anyway, let's, let's get to that when we get to it. Okay, so we've got to figure out what not equals does. Unique mask. Let's start with our examples. Now that we know about strings, their examples are going to make more sense. And so Ctrl, Shift, dash, it's very useful for splitting a cell, and then, um. Control or Apple left square bracket to. Unindent. Uh. Okay, I can already see what this is. It tells you whether or not the thing in this position, whether we've seen it before in this list. So that's unique so far, that's unique so far, that's unique so far. We have seen that before, so it's a zero. And so presumably at some point, we're going to learn how to use this to access just the elements of. access just the elements of this which are true. And then that'll be how we would create a unique list of elements. Yep, if it's a first occurrence, got it. Yeah, I think it's nice to have a numeric example as well. Okay, are you happy with that? That's weird. Okay, these all look fine, I guess. Okay, so dyadic eight not equal to. Oh, I suppose I should have unindented all of those at once. Would have been faster, but never mind. Okay. Not sure this one adds much. Keep it as simple as possible, shall we? Okay. And zipping along with the easy ones. So these are presumably going to be easy as well, although the monadic versions may be odd. We will find out. Oh, okay, that's easy. Less than. Less than sign. Less than. Okay. So what I should do actually is do that and then that. And then that. Cool. And I assume greater than is going to be the same. All right.
Is the broadcasting supposed to work just like characters even here?
Yeah, yeah, this is just a one element. This is just a, sorry, this is just a, a, a scaler, you know, a, a, a string. So.
Not there, not there, below.
Oh, sorry.
Less than, yeah.
Yeah, for less than. Yeah, it should be exactly the same. So we've got a scaler here and a list and an array here. So the scaler will broadcast over the array.
Okay. So if we have a matrix and a vector, then it would both work.
Correct. Without using each. All right. But we will get to it. So that's, we'll get there. Greater than. I guess it's fine. We've got some which are a bit trivially easy, because can just go fast. All right. So what are the greater than equal tos? Are they all? Oh. All right. So we may as well just copy this. And we can just say less than or equal to. Just then. That did not work at all. Less than or equal to. Greater than or equal to. Than or equal to. And how do we type these? Six and four. I see. So we've got four, six, eight. Um, is this one four? Because it's the smallest. Yes, it is. That's good. So this will be six. And then we'll need that here as well. Four, whoops. And six. Okay. All right. Um, I guess we're up to this one. Oh, depth. Okay. Yeah. So when, um, a character is the same as another character, but with an extra underline, they use the word underbar. So for example, there's an iota underbar. And there's an epsilon underbar. What other ones are there? Equal underbar. There's one. Left shoe underbar. I think that's it. And this is comma bar, because it's not underneath it. Okay, so equals underbar is colon. Equal underbar. And the monatic version of that is depth. And the dyadic version of that is match. Okay. Depth, that's not quite right. Let's see if we can guess first. So could anybody figure it out? Depth is seven, zero. Let me see, is it the same as rank? Not quite. Oh, this is like not consistent. What does that do? Hmm. And what about this? What does this do? Okay. Um, we're going to have to introduce something new first then, which is arrays and arrays. Let's see, where's a good place to put that?
We have like a complex object section or something next to basic object.
Maybe just to, just fixing others, get these heading levels wrong. Basic objects here, real. I'm just going to say some objects. And, um, then we can say arrays in arrays. Yes, because we don't need to know about matrices to be able to do this.
And I think, um, single characters and multi-linked characters are handled differently and nested differently if they're mixed with numbers.
Hmm. Okay, let's, got some examples I could use. Um, so if we've got like one, two, three, four, A, B, you mean something like this?
Um, I think if you just do like, uh, even without the parentheses, like one, two, three, four, A, B. Uh huh. I think it will, it will nest the A and the A, B.
Hmm.
Um, and I think that's, it's, I think it does something a little bit different if you just do one, two, three, four, and then just A. If I remember right.
That sounds right, because it wouldn't be a list. Um, okay. So the reason is actually is that this one here is identical to this. And that this is actually a array. And so this is actually an array. So this is an array containing array. This is also an array containing an array. And so let's move this one up here. All right. Great. Seems like a good place to stop, I think. Then we can look at match tomorrow.
All right.
Thanks all.
Well, this was fun as usual. Thank you for hosting, Jeremy.
My pleasure. Thank you for joining. See you again.
I have, I have a little something to add. Yeah. So when you said like, uh, those characters are in Greek and they actually benefit, uh, Europeans. Not quite. I mean, if you have taken math in high school, you know all the Greek alphabet.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Yeah, physics, chemistry, everything has Greek alphabets.
But I mean.
I've forgotten it all. I, I have, I have a hard time remembering all the characters and I always mean to go back and learn them and I just never do.
I've.
I mean, they can get really confusing if you know other languages like Russian, because like the, the R in Russian comes from the Greek row. But their character is just a P. So that's a huge pet peeve of mine is you have a lot of like redundant charac-
Yeah.
Characters when you're using those, uh, Greek letters.
So there's this, um, one of the guys that, that wrote a lot of the stuff in dialogue APL, left and created a new language called BQN. And one of the things he did in his simple set was not to have any any characters from an alphabet, full stop.
And this is better.
Which, yeah, it was a decision. I mean, I guess these are letters. I don't know why he can justify these exactly, but I guess they're kind of not, because they've got an extra dash on them or something. I don't know. Anyway. All right. Bye all. Have a good day.
Yeah, bye.
See you.
Bye.